We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. If everyone will please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Miller-Wanway.
Here.
Alderman Stern.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Howman.
Here.
Alderman Prueen. Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you. And we're going to go ahead and start with a public comment. And we have three people who've submitted cards, and you have up to three minutes. And we're going to start with Kyle Corus.
Good evening. I'm a senior law student with the Community Preservation Clinic at the University of Illinois College of Law. I'd like to inform you of an exciting event that is being held in the Friendship Park neighborhood of West Bloomington on April 25th. In conjunction with Mid-Central Community Action Next Step, West Bloomington Housing Collaborative, and United Way, we are holding a community innovation fair with the goal of giving residents the opportunity to share their ideas for future business ventures or neighborhood improvement in West Bloomington. The community innovation fair is a unique opportunity for residents and nonprofit organizations to present their new idea in the format of a booth at a street fair in the Friendship Park area. The community innovation fair booths will showcase ideas that are being developed, meaning that the ideas are in brainstorming, early development, or early implementation stages. The goal is to have the booth showcase the idea and invite feedback from residents and community stakeholders. This format provides presenters with an opportunity to formulate their idea, collaborate with others interested in their idea, and receive feedback and ideas. The goal is a dynamic fair in which participants and attendees will network and collaborate about their innovative ideas, and the hope is that we will see many of these ideas effectively implemented in our future. Of those selected, the top 10 resident applications will receive $100 prize to develop their booth as well as a mentor to guide them in its creation. At the community innovation fair, attendees will have the opportunity to vote on their favorite concept, with the winner receiving $2,500 in startup funds, and the second-place finisher receiving $1,500 in startup funds. We are accepting applications for booths until March 27th. There are applications in the back of the room, as well as online at MCCAinc.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Fistbump Josh Smidgell.
How are you guys doing? Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Fistbump, and I'm from the morning show on City's 92.9 with Ian Bane. I looked through today's packet and found that the Bloomington government thinks that there is a strategic value to spending a bunch of our tax money on new buildings. It seems that there is always a strategic value to spend more money than the city of Bloomington has. Take that tax money and build affordable housing. Now more people depend on government for their housing. Now more people vote Democrat to keep their government housing. It's like a drug dealer, getting people hooked on government. Amelia Baragis, a Democrat, gave thousands of dollars to Democrat candidates for office while she was in college. Amelia Baragis is hooked on your money. It's time for an innovation. Do you smell what I smell? You can smell it in this room every day. I smell money. Your money. Maybe Amelia Baragis does, too. Mayor Renner won't respond. He can't respond because he's too afraid to respond. What does that say about him?
Just to make it clear, we don't respond to anybody's comments irrespective of whether they have any validity or not. We're going to go ahead and move forward to Alton Franklin.
My name is Alton Franklin. I live at 508 Patterson Drive here in Bloomington. Several things on my mind tonight. One of the first is proclamation coming out for the National Infrastructure Day. And I am exceedingly grateful that we have the infrastructure we do in America today. There's been a lot of hard work, a lot of money that's gone into it. I don't understand the emphasis on the public transportation. Quite honestly, I come from pretty humble beginnings. I know what it's like riding a bus, and I couldn't wait to get my first car. That gave me my freedom. And now it seems like there's this big push on to get us all cloistered, to throw us all into one little place where we can stay nice and quiet and be good little sheep. And that I have an issue with. As I said, I come from real humble beginnings. That leads me to the next issue, which is, I'd like to apologize, it seems that I said something that wasn't entirely true back in 2009 when I first started coming to City Council. I had a meeting back in 2009. I called on then-Mayor Stockton to resign because they burned through all the cash that was raked in during the good days, and then kept on spending like it was still the good days. And it seems like if nothing changes, nothing changes. We're still spending money that we don't have. I am grateful that I have been given the wherewithal from the good Lord above to pay my way. That's the way I was raised, is you don't take somebody else's money to do something that they don't want to do it with. If they wanted to do it, they would have given you money to begin with. The government has a very limited number of items that they are responsible for: infrastructure, public safety, education, and there's some other things that have a commonality that cross all borders, all lines. When you start stepping off into things, I heard the word "strategic." It's rapidly becoming my second-most-liked word, my first being revenue. Because, folks, let's be honest, can we get that far? Can we call it what it is? It's taxes. It's money that the government reaches into my pocket and takes out against my will, because if I chose to do it, I would have given it. I didn't. The way I was raised, that's not redistribution of wealth. It's called stealing. When you take money that does not belong to you, that, plain and simple, is stealing. We keep on going, around and around and around, and I was struck in reviewing all the things that have been going on since 2009. One of the sayings that I learned as a child is, "Those who do not learn from the mistakes of history are doomed to repeat them." We've got a pretty glaring example in the not-too-distant past with Detroit.
We're going to need you to wrap it up. You're well over.
And I just don't want to see us become another Detroit. The citizens of Bloomington are amazing and wonderful people. They deserve better. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we move right along to our Bloomington Population Projection Presentation by Jennifer Six from -- we've got about, we've 20 minutes total, about 10 minutes for presentation and about 10 minutes for question and answer. And Jennifer, hit it.
Thank you very much, Mayor Renner, members of the council. I appreciate the time this evening to talk a little bit about our comprehensive planning process, and specifically about population projection for the city of Bloomington that we've developed for the plan. And, let's see. Every arrangement is different. There we go. I'll be covering that projection and how we got there, and also a little discussion about the changing demographics that not just here in Bloomington, but also really across the country that might have some impact on how the plan plays out. Those of you who had an opportunity last summer to review our existing conditions report that was the first element of the comprehensive plan process may recall this chart, which, of course, in this venue is completely impossible to read. I do recommend that you go back and look at the original. We included it here because it shows the entire history of Bloomington's population change. And it's interesting to have the perspective of an early boom, and a long period of reasonably stable, steady growth, but nothing spectacular, and then yet another boom. And this ends in a sort of estimated number for 2014. We've updated that a little bit. And we're going to take a closer look at a couple of periods that were sort of interesting as we considered the issues. And we're doing this in the form of averaged annual population growth rates, which is a pretty simple and frankly slightly misleading approach, but it gives us a basis for comparison. And it's a little bit of a cautionary tale about percentages. Unfortunately, we tend to think of growth rates in terms of percentage change over time. But as you can see, in 150 years of the most populous period here, from 1860 to 2010, and 2010 is our base year for this discussion, there was a pretty substantial change in the population. In 2010, the population here was 10 times what it was in 1860. And between just 1850 and 1860, the population of Bloomington quadrupled. That's because we were starting with a tiny number and moving to a larger one because in 1853, what should happen but the railroad's arriving, as you'll note when you get a chance to look at that chart. That steady but slow period we talked about in the previous slide, the population doubled during that 80-year period. That's not terribly spectacular, but it was a reasonable rate of growth, the lowest on our chart here. We also looked at the last century, from 1910 to 2010, slightly higher than that 80-year period, during which the population of the city nearly tripled, although there were periods in which growth rates were lower than the average for the period. And then finally, we looked at the last 50 years. Again, the population of the city of Bloomington more than doubled. And even with that fairly remarkable outcome, the census years of 1990 through 2010 outperformed that trend. As I alluded to, some of those very rapid growth rates in the early years of the city were the product of the fact that we were starting at a very small number and rapidly adding population, but still under the 10,000 mark. This is now a mature community with a sizable population. Growth from this point forward is not going to be in those doubling and tripling levels. It's going to be more incremental, and we expect it to continue forward at something below the average annual historical rates. So here's where we started. And again, we're using Census 2010 as a baseline. And the dark line and indications of individual census years are actual census data from 1970 through 2010, with an extrapolated number for 2005, and I'll explain why in a moment, based on the Bloomington 2006 special census results. And the reason why we did that extrapolation is that we are using a cohort component population model, and it requires inputs from the two census years and the mid-year period, that 2005 period. So that's what we have there. And the model uses inputs for migration, both in and out, birth rates, death rates. We had an opportunity in this case to use a model which not only deals with age and gender, but also with ethnicity. So there were some additional inputs from that that we now use to have a slightly better handle on how growth worked here. And in the first run of this, using essentially our historical model and the numbers I just mentioned, the 2010 census numbers and our 2005 estimated number, we came up with that blue line. And that was consistent with the last 40 years in Bloomington and with the larger historical trend. But we noticed a problem, which is that its number for 2015, where we are now, seemed high, given the experience of the last five to seven years, and the impact of global recession and economic downturn, and particularly the housing crisis, which, of course, has had an enormous impact here. So in discussion among our staff and with the steering committee, including Mr. Hales, we considered how we might revise this number and see how we could come up with perhaps a more realistic short-term forecast. So we took the 2015 number and used a modification based on some research done in our office looking at building permits and other issues and information from various sources, and came up with an estimated number for 2015 of 78,400 and something, and used that as an attempt to model a slightly different expectation based on recent experience, which is a little dangerous because, of course, we are talking about a period of intense change, but also of a concentrated economic disaster. And it's probably not desirable to make a lot of assumptions based on that very concentrated period, because we have a long history to draw from, and this is an anomalous period in our history. But nonetheless, we carried that through, and what we came up with was the red line, which is essentially the no-change result. Very slow growth, but consistent with the most recent experience we had to work with. And again, we discussed that with the steering committee, and the two numbers you see in that slight gray area are the 2035 estimates, projections, which is the target, you know, the horizon year for the plan that's underway. That produces, for the more aggressive population estimate, an annual growth rate of about 1.65, and for the lower one, less than half of 1%, which, again, is anomalous in our experience. So we took a slightly different approach. And again, in consultation with the steering committee and with the advisory council for the plan, we went back and looked at the two lines we had and at the census data we had. We made a slight adjustment for 2005 based on a rethinking of how the 2006 special census was done. And we kept the constrained number for 2015, that 78,400 and some, which is our estimate for current population in the city. And then we considered the impact of potential action by the city, and by residents, and by business, and by other players, and said, okay, let's assume that we have a period of slow growth continuing over the next five to 10 years. But from that point forward, the impact of economic development, of some additional population, of perhaps, you know, other economic actors that we don't yet know about, what might we expect? And that produced for us the darker dotted line that you see kind of in the middle there with a slight up curve. Part of what concerned us about the red line is that it shows a diminution of population by 2040. Our model likes even numbers, so we carried it out to the decade for that census. And that seemed unnecessarily pessimistic, again, given how limited our information was, that led to that red-orange line. So the center line, that dark dotted line, is where we are now as a population projection. It produces an average annual growth rate, again, we have to remember that we're talking in incremental terms now, slightly over 1%, and that, we find, is consistent with other sources, with other conversations we've had about what the expectations are for the city of Bloomington over the next 20 years. Briefly, I'll just talk a little bit about demographics. You'll have seen this chart in the memo that we prepared. Some things we know are taking place, the trend towards smaller families, that's true nationwide. That means that our school-age population towards the bottom of our, it's not so much a pyramid as a ziggurat, I think, are going to decline slightly as a percentage of the population. There's also a global trend towards an aging population. Fortunately, our circumstance is not as extreme as other countries, but we do have an aging population, and that shows up, too, in the degree to which those people as a percentage of the population increase. We have some increasing diversity, which we see as we play out our model, which, again, uses ethnic identity as well as gender and age. And we also have the fact of Bloomington, as we consider these possibilities, in that it is such an appealing community. I've lived here most of my life in Bloomington Normal, and I've watched people come and stay for decades. We do have to consider how the demographics are changing and what those expectations might mean for the city, and how the plan can address them, and how those changes may affect the city's priorities going forward. But that's where we are, and I would be happy to take any questions you might have.
Alderman Lauer. Did you do anything with economics? Did you look at our median family income level? Did you look at domestic product? I know I'm talking macro here, and we're really talking about a micro.
This strictly looks at population mechanics. So we have, again, a model that's essentially a fairly complicated spreadsheet. This particular version is a little more complex than the one we used in 2005. And all it does is take a specific set of inputs, and this is a standard practice in the profession. It looks at migration in and out. It looks at birth rates. It looks at death rates, although those are actually less important in some strange ways. And it looks at the sort of five-year age cohorts and how they progress through time. So part of what you're seeing here, when we talk about the population pyramids, sometimes there are funny little anomalies in those. It's because the model is taking each group of, you know, zero to five, five to six to 10, whatever, and moving it through the lifecycle. So every now and then, there's a weird glitch. It'll be, when we do Normal, you'll see it's even more pronounced because of the high population of people between the ages of 18 and 25. In any event, it doesn't take economic factors into account. All the model does is look at the specifics of population movement and change. Now, what we did when we did the final, it didn't like that, never mind. Let me see if I can find the page. When we did that final reassessment, after discussions, you know, again, in our office and with the steering committee and so on, what we did say was, you had sort of two options here. We think that the two outliers, the edge lines, are kind of the outside edges of probability, based on what we know about our history, but also with some economic consideration. With pretty vivacious economic growth, you could get to 108,000 people in Bloomington by 2035. With not much change, you might still be at roughly 84,000. I want to emphasize, by the way, these I want to emphasize, by the way, these numbers look very specific. That's because the model likes numbers that look specific. In a perfect world, I'd be able to go back and around those all to a nice even number because that gives, I think, perhaps not entirely fair implication of precision. But the idea is that within that black line, you see a slow build that's based on our economic potential. In discussions we've had with our working groups, the number, all of the citizens who've been involved in this planning process since last summer, and again, a review of the city's history, in a clear-eyed, we hope, acknowledgement of things that have changed in the last five years, but a recognition that the city of Bloomington, as we said in the memorandum, offers a number of advantages that speak well for the potential for future economic growth. The model itself doesn't do that, but we kind of add that flow at the end.
Alderman Black, and then Sterns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Great presentation. Could you pull up the slide that has the population growth, major events and milestones?
Oh, sure. It's going to be really hard to read.
It's okay.
And it's not going to want to do that. Come on.
While you're pulling that up, I'm just going to muse here.
Sure.
It's interesting to look at this, I find this the most fascinating slide in your presentation, because what I'm seeing here is at no point does Bloomington's population ever go down, and I'm wondering if that's atypical for a community of our age. Is there periods of time where you would see kind of dips in population between censuses? Sensei?
I'm not sure that typical is the right concept here, because so much of this, and you can see it looking at the various milestones we've identified, and there are plenty that I'm sure we should have included but didn't have room for. So much is dependent on those events. So, you know, the railroad arrives in 1853, and suddenly you've, you know, quadrupled the number of people living in Bloomington. You have a nice, long, steady period of growth. That covers an incredible amount of activity in the rest of the planet, basically. You've got, you know, it's sort of amazing, really, you've got the Civil War, you've got the entire, you know, economic period of turbulence of the late 19th century, you've got two world wars, you've got the Depression.
And during that, you see that the population is still increasing during those times.
Exactly, and I think that's where we sort of come back to the notion that we are quite lucky, because we have a location which has been enriched by both natural resources and by long periods of judicious growth. We have excellent transportation facilities. I'm the transportation planner for the Regional Planning Commission, so I kind of think about that. A lot of advantages that, again, we identify as, you know, potential opportunities for the city, even though the specifics may change. Obviously, there are communities right here in central Illinois that have undergone substantial population loss and have had that happen as a result of either very specific events or just a long-term change in how the economy functions and how social movements function. Look at the smaller communities here in McLean County, same thing. You know, what used to be self-contained, pretty thriving, small farm communities are now declining satellites for Bloomington Normal. So a lot of this is very specific to the place, and we have been extraordinarily fortunate.
One of the things, too, is I'm looking at this, and I can pull this data myself, is kind of overlaying this versus like a state of Illinois, because I hear, you know, a few vocal people talk about how everybody's leaving Illinois and we're losing population, and I'd be curious to see kind of how we've trended over time versus the state as a whole. Because I know that there is some movement, but I think that we're very fortunate, and you pointed that out, so thank you.
Alderman Sterns.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about outmigration as well. I think the Illinois Policy Institute has been extremely, you know, objective about just simply giving us the numbers on outmigration from the state. I mean, I don't think we can question numbers. Did you look at that in the city, or?
What we have is from the census, the numbers from McLean County, and that's a fairly traditional way of doing it, and I, one of the concerns about a project like this is that you are pulling data from a lot of sources at various levels. So we have some information that's specific to Bloomington, we have some information that's based on the county, because a great deal is county-based in the federal data collection, and then others where we're sort of extrapolating statewide, for example. So we've kind of find, we're trying to find a mix there that looks like it's reasonable from our experience, and that's something that we can continue to work on. We have looked carefully at migration, yes, there has been outmigration from the state of Illinois. Obviously, we've had a recent period of outmigration here in Bloomington Normal. Again, we have to ask, is it reasonable to use that as the basis for a long-term projection? You know, this is pretty clearly incidental on specific events, both globally and locally. Do we expect that to continue? Do we expect there to be other activity which might mitigate those effects? Those are the questions where we start getting into a consideration of the economic future and where we say, given our history, given our advantages, given what we know about the resiliency of the city of Bloomington as an economic entity, we can reasonably expect over the next 25 years that there will be change in a positive direction that permits further growth.
Thank you for that. The other thing, though, I was going to ask you too, in terms of the objective number of people living in Bloomington, Illinois, we, do we depend on our census, which is only every, what, four or is it five years? I mean, we have nothing else, do we?
We do. What we did here was to take the best available number and then look at, and I have to give credit to my boss, to the Seup and Maraju, who did a lot of this research, look at local information about things like building permits and number of residential units available, vacancy rates, things of that sort, to come up with, you know, an algebra of those factors to determine where we likely are at the moment. That is not, by no means, you know, that 78,400 people, that's not on the nose. That's our best estimation at the moment. One of the advantages we have here, and it's something that we will consider as the city looks towards updating this plan, once it's adopted this time around, is that we have another census coming up in 2020, which seems like a long way off, but it'll be here before you know it. We're already programming transportation projects for 2020, I can hardly believe it. Anyway, that will give us a check, because that really is, the best number we have is the every 10 years mandated by the Constitution, here's your count number. When we get that number, which will be about six years from now, we're not quite to the census day period, that'll tell us, first of all, how much of the long-term impact we might expect from the disruption of the last seven years, but also whether this set of estimates is reasonable and how we might need to adapt it if, in fact, we do. I have to say, we've had a pretty good track record over the last few years, and until we hit this sort of disruption, we had done a reasonably good job of doing population projections and actually a little more aggressively than was true, for example, for the state agencies that do the same sort of thing. They tended to undersell Bloomington and Normal as places where growth would happen, and we always outperformed their estimates. Things are a little different now, and we have to take that into account, and we have. But at the same time, we can have some confidence in the experience we've brought to this.
Just to clarify, the U.S. Census Bureau updates every year metro cities. Last summer, they're within 600 of your estimates, so they said 79,000 last summer.
Okay.
You're at 78,400, so you're real close.
And yeah, we tend to be a little leery about the annual updates, because the, this is the American Community Survey that's done by the Census to pick up data that the Census itself no longer captures, and it's done on a fairly small sampling scale, the margins of error are huge. I mean, even the people at the Census Bureau complain about this fact, and it's a little nervous-making to rely on it for more than, you know, ballpark numbers.
Alderman Longway, did you have a?
Just a brief question. Since you're the transportation expert in your office, can you tell us a little bit about high-speed rail and what impact you think it might have on our population growth? I tend to think that it could. I mean, potentially, people from, you know, further up north would decide to leave closer here.
Given that we are already, you know, we have a population here that commutes into Chicago today, under less than ideal circumstances. I can think of a surprising number of people who do that. If high-speed rail is implemented in the way that was suggested and is being put into place, and if it can be maintained so that service is reliable and people feel confident about using it, I think you would find that there would be quite a few people who would elect to live here and perhaps work in the city, and to some extent, vice versa. And that as that system becomes more robust and people see it as a permanent feature, something they really can use as a commuter, that that would simply intensify. We, you know, we already have people who live here because they love it here, but work in the city. And that, I know Mayor Stockton felt very strongly that over the long term, that was going to be a factor. I think as we look towards, first, this current iteration of high-speed rail, and then, we hope someday, really high-speed rail along the same rail corridor, anyone who has a spare $50 billion lying around in their back pocket, please let me know. But, you know, that would be a transformation for central Illinois as a whole, but also for the city of Bloomington because of its proximity to the rail line. We've proposed a central Illinois regional commuter rail system that would feed into that. That, too, would be a long-term project. But this community, Bloomington and Normal, are ideally, literally positioned to be the hub of a system like that and the core of the state in terms of rail access for passengers.
And is this something that you factor into your projections here, or?
No, because most of that is way too far out, and again, there's the, we don't actually have $50 billion problem. But someday, who knows, as we understand better the dynamics of running a really good rail system in the United States, that might come.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right. Oh, I'm sorry, you had a question?
Oh, I'm sorry? Oh, I guess I turned my microphone off, sorry. Just briefly, on your last slide, you had a bullet of increase, regarding increasing diversity, and I wondered if, not necessarily right now, but could you provide us with a little bit more information about what does that mean, and maybe some projections about, like, where it's been and where it's going?
In a nutshell, it means we, you know, we already have a somewhat diverse population here. We can expect, you know, an increase in minority populations, we've already seen that in the last 20 years, simply because there is and continues to be economic opportunity here.
Yeah. I don't know if you have any projected numbers, but I would, I'd be really interested.
Fortunately, with the model doesn't show us, because it really, again, focuses on the birth, death, and migration experience, it doesn't really give us a good output for an actual span, it just gives us an aggregate, but I'd be happy to share that with you.
All right. Thank you very much, great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay. Now, we're moving right along to a related item, certainly on our agenda. Item 6B is proclamation declaring April 9, 2015, as Stand Up For Transportation Day. And we have someone for Connect Transit coming forward. Jennifer? So, whereas, April 9, 2015, marks Stand Up For Transportation Day, a national transportation infrastructure day that highlights the critical need to invest in updating our nation's transportation infrastructure. And, whereas, transportation is the economic backbone of our nation's economy, and public transportation is a very important part of our nation's transportation system, federal funding for public transportation infrastructure needs to increase, and Congress needs to pass a long-term multimodal transportation bill by May 31, 2015. And whereas, public transportation is a proven catalyst for economic growth, since for every dollar invested in public transportation, $4 in economic returns is generated locally, creating economically vibrant and prosperous communities. And whereas, public transportation offers millions of Americans access to economic opportunities, since nearly 60% of all trips taken on public transportation are for work commutes. And, whereas, Stand Up For Transportation Day will be celebrated in small, medium, and large communities across the United States, as a day that highlights the critical need for funding transportation infrastructure, both public transportation and highway infrastructure. And now, therefore, I, Terry Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Illinois, do hereby proclaim April 9, 2015, as Stand Up For Transportation Day. Jennifer, thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations. Sure.
So there was a lot of whereas in that proclamation, but thank you for your support of our National Day of Advocacy. As you heard, it's a time that we're rallying with other transit agencies across the United States, and it's our hopes that through this rally, we'll be able to urge Congress to pass a long-term transportation funding bill. At Connect Transit, we've made it very clear that we want to continue to be the reliable and safe transportation connecting communities, as well as to continue to improve our service to make riding more accessible and more appealing for current riders and new riders. We hear time and time again that the community is grateful for the service that we provide, but there is always, along with that gratefulness, room for improvement that we hear. Because of our desire to meet our community's expectations and then exceed them, it's important for us to do all we can to rally for continued funding support at the federal, state, and local level. Thank you for standing up with Connect Transit on Stand Up For Transportation Day.
Thank you. Can we move right along to our, excuse me, our consent agenda? Are there any items that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Painter, is her second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt, and I'm going to go ahead and, should be starting now, there we go. Okay. The motion carries eight to zero, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you. We move on now to the public hearing portion, but actually, in advance of the public hearing, we have a very brief presentation, and that is by Jennifer Tony, and is she here? Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for the time to give a little presentation. Give me just a second here, and I'll see if I can figure out how to get it up. There we go. I think I was introduced in November when I very first started, as Sharon Walker was leaving, and we talked briefly about things that were coming up and the Community Development Block Grant, and it was announced at that point that we've had the grant for 40 years. And so, we've done a few of these consolidated plans, HUD requires that we do them every five years, and so we're just getting ready to wrap up previous consolidated plan, and now we're, have developed the plan that will take us through the next five years. So I wanted to explain just a little bit about what the consolidated plan is, who worked on it this time, how it came together, and then focus primarily on our one-year action plan, which is a part of the consolidated plan, but we do one every year of the five years, because it's really going to be the meat of what we're going to do for the next year. With the consolidated plan, let me see if I can figure out the easiest way to do this. There we go, sorry. As I mentioned, we're required that we do a five-year plan every year called the consolidated plan, and it provides the basic framework for our activities for the next five years, so this plan will run through 2020. This particular plan, we contracted with the United Way of McLean County to put together a majority of the data for this, and I appreciate Sharon Walker's foresight into knowing that this would be a huge project for somebody that was brand-new, because it was quite an undertaking. I'm sure on the part of the United Way, they worked on it for quite a while. With their data that they collected from the 2014 Community Assessment, and then data from the 2010 American Community Survey, and some other sources, they put together the majority of the plan. Okay, with the consolidated plan, it consists of a needs assessment, a market analysis, a strategic plan, and then the one-year action plan. And if anybody's interested in reading the full copies of those, this is where we make them available. At the Bloomington Public Library, City Hall, we have a copy in our office, and then it's also available on the city website. Being that we only have a little bit of time, I'm not going to cover everything that's in it, it's 150 pages. With it, HUD requires citizen participation in just about everything that we do, because obviously, the program is for the citizens, and so we want to make sure we have their input, and that's the purpose of the meeting tonight. With the plan, we have to have it available to the public for comment for 30 days, and it's been out there since February 23. So right now, we're right at our 30 days, and we're accepting comments through the 25th. So if someone has anything they forget to share tonight, they're welcome to share it for the next couple of days. We have to hold a public hearing, which we're doing here tonight, and then we are required, as we would anyhow but, to take note of all of the public input that comes in, and then if for some reason, someone has a comment that we're not able to include in the plan for some reason, we have to explain why we aren't able to do that. Oops, I keep going the wrong way, sorry. With the needs assessment portion that came out of the Community Survey that the United Way did last year, these are some things that we found that were most directly related to this plan and the work that we do with the CDPG grant. First of all, there was a need for affordable housing, which I don't think is any, you know, news to anyone, but especially when we look at rental units, Bloomington Normal has one of the highest fair market rents in central Illinois, and so that was one area especially that came out, was the need for more affordable rental units. But when looking at affordable housing in general, the survey indicated that 43% of citywide households can't afford their housing. So of that 43%, nearly half of them have a cost burden with their housing of greater than 30%. And that's kind of the threshold, 30% or under is, of your household costs or of your annual cost for housing is considered affordable. So about half of those 43% are above that 30%. So about half of those 43% are above that 30%. Almost 22% of the 43 that can't afford their housing have a housing cost burden over 50%. So, we've got a lot of people out there that are struggling to make ends meet, to keep a roof over their head. When we look at household problems, and with our CDBG grant, we primarily deal with the population that makes 80% or less of the area median income, which the numbers for 2015 just came out, and for a family of four, I believe, is $83,600. But if you're looking at, there were four specific problems that they were looking at for the survey. And when dealing with that specific population, people that had one or more of those housing problems, there was about 2,000 households. When you go up to the next level of income, that number drops almost in half of housing problems. So we know that there's a need for our rehabilitation program, because the families that are meeting our income guidelines are the ones that are having the housing problems. Other things that came out that were of interest to us were the need for more public or supportive housing, need for more accessible homes for people with disabilities, but especially low-income people with disabilities, need for more services to assist those who are unemployed and seeking jobs, and the need for more public improvements such as street and sidewalks. I won't get that, okay. So that's kind of an overview of generally what's in the needs assessment. Again, the whole thing is 150 pages, so that's very much the quick and dirty of it. When we look at this coming year, this is what we wanna do. When choosing activities, we have to keep in mind, with CDBG, HUD requires us to have every single thing that we do, if we're applying their money to it, it has to meet one of these three national objectives. So it has to benefit low- and moderate-income persons, aid in the prevention or elimination of slums and blight, or meet a need having particular urgency. In addition to that, 70% of the funding that we do get has to go to that low-mod income national objective. So we have to keep that in mind at all times, because we have to meet that 70%. They allow us to meet that 70% in a variety of ways, and you'll see that I've highlighted the housing activities, because that's really where they push you to spend your money. And so therefore, that's a huge factor in why we choose to do what we do. In addition to that, we can spend a maximum of 15% of the money that we get on public service projects, and then no more than 20% on administrative expenses. Sorry, I'm having a hard time with this mouse here. For this year, as I mentioned, and you're all aware, I'm fairly new, so we're not planning on making any major changes to the program this year. Sharon left me a really good framework to work from with a lot of good notes. So we're pretty much gonna follow the same format. And I think I'll show you a slide later that shows that it really is working anyhow. But once I'm able to get into some HUD training and learn all of the intricacies of the CDBG grant, we'll be looking at probably some different types of activities that maybe we haven't focused on in the past. But I wanna really make sure that we're doing everything right before we get into that. One minor change, or it's not really minor, I guess, but a change that we're looking at for this year, and it's probably just a one-year change, but we're looking at putting more into infrastructure than we have. And when we get to that, I'll explain why, it's gonna look like we're spending a lot more on it, but some of that money is carryforward. So when looking at the things that we've selected, we've tried to keep the key findings, and then those national objectives in mind. So an overall budget for year one is looking at, you'll see on the left, I've got the kind of the national objective that we're meeting with the activity, a general broad range of what the activity is, and then what we're budgeting. So we're looking at housing-related activities at about $171,000. And the next slide will kind of explain what all those are, but, or about 23% of our budget for this year. For the slum blight, we're looking at our demolition budget of about 90, a little over 92, almost 93,000. Public services at about a little over 68. And then, infrastructure, 387,000, which is 53% of our budget for this year. And then about 10,000 on administrative, which is really only about 1%. And then the bottom of that kind of explains where the money's gonna come from. So we have firm numbers from HUD, that with the amount, the 549,498 is exactly what we'll be getting from HUD. We usually estimate program income at about 30,000. It kind of depends, but this year, I didn't think we were gonna hit that. But then in the past week, we've had two people that have called in that need payoff balances, because they're selling their houses, and it's gonna put us up over, so it varies. Same thing with the carryforward funds. We're estimating that we'll have about 150,000 that we'll be carrying forward, based on where we are with our activities right now, and what we think we can get finished between now and May 1st. So when looking at the housing activities, we have 46,000 of new money budgeted for our rehabilitation loans. This is quite a bit lower than what we normally do, simply because there's a trade-off with the infrastructure that I'm gonna talk about here in a minute. For the construction charities, we'd like to continue that project this year. That's the project that covers rehabilitation for manufactured homes. We have 20,000 budgeted in for youth build. We are deeding a property over to them, and so the 20,000 would be used towards rehab on that project, which would then be sold as an affordable home to a low-mod family. For the WBRP, we have two projects that we're gonna help them with this year at 2,500 each. It's the Tool Library and then their facade program. And then we usually put in money for rehab service delivery, and those are things like the money we have to pay to do credit checks, and things that are related to the housing loans that we do. Then we'll estimate that we're gonna be able to add in about 45,000 in carryforward funds to the rehab loans. The other thing that we will look at, and it will depend on where we are come May 1st, but the WBRP money is really, it's cut significantly from where we were this time last year. So if we have more carryforward than we anticipate, we will restore those funding levels as well. For the demolition budget, we have 44,000 in new money budgeted, and about a little less than 50 there, 48,818, for carryforward funding that we'd like to rebudget for that. And with that, again, it depends, because it varies, that's about two to three properties. And actually, on the last slide, I'm sorry, I didn't point that out. But with that money that we're budgeting, we're estimating 25 to 30 households that we'll be able to serve. Did I go the right way? Yes, sorry. Okay, for our public service activities, we do an emergency service grant with PATH every year. This is a grant that we give them that helps with the prevention of homelessness. If we have a family that is possibly, you know, they're on the verge of homelessness, and they can't, they can afford the monthly rent, but they can't afford the down payment, we can help with the down payment with that money. Or maybe, you know, they're getting ready to have their water shut off, or whatever, they use that money for those types of things. Also, with the prevention of homelessness, we have two positions that we fund in part for PATH. Piecemeals, one of HUD's objectives is to help our elderly citizens age in place. And so, by having piecemeals where they can have home delivery of meals, then that helps meet that HUD goal as well. And then, I have to admit, I still don't understand what Section 3 job training is, but I know it's something we're required to do. I still have to figure out exactly why we're required to do it, and all of that. But this helps us to meet that goal with HUD, and we partner with the Bloomington Housing Authority on that. For the infrastructure projects, part of the reason why we have more than half of our budget this year budgeted for that is we have 100,000 for a sewer project that was actually budgeted for this year on Jackson Street that we're not gonna, they're not gonna be able to get to it, so we're gonna carryforward that money. And what that's gonna do is that's gonna help with the connection fees for our low-mod families in that area. And we're estimating that we'll be able to help about 10 families with that. The Catherine Street Sewer Project is a new project, and it ties back to Brent Shore Development, which is, they have purchased a home on that block that they're planning on tearing down, and they're going to build a fully accessible rental property. But in order to do that, we have to do some sewer work. There basically is no sewer main on that, is the way that I understand it on that road. So that money is going to belief on the majority of that project, including the connection fees for those families. Oops, sorry. And then we have the 10,000 budgeted for administration, which is training, postage, all that kind of stuff that it takes to run the program. I wanna leave you with just a couple things, first of all. This slide here shows a map of our activities that we completed for this consolidated plan period that we're in right now. You'll see a lot of good work was done, and the packets that you got, this is an overview, but then there's also maps that breaks it down by activity, by rehab, by infrastructure, public service, those things. But then, you'll also see that the majority of the activities are concentrated on the west side, which is where the need is the greatest. Our Buildings and Conditions Report tells us that the average housing age is 115 years old on that part of town, so that's the area where the services are most needed. And then, I love this before and after picture, because I think it really shows how CDBG benefits the community. You've got a house on the left that is obviously a blight in the neighborhood. It's doing nothing to raise property values in that area. We were able to come in and use CDBG money to remove it, and then donate the land to, I'm sure it was either Youth Builder Habitat, and they built a new affordable home that not only removed the blight, but then also helped a family that might not have been able to otherwise afford a new home, to be able to have one. So, I've got a few other slides, but they're kind of the same thing. So at this point, I can open it up to questions?
Okay, and then if you'll stay around if we have further questions after the public hearing on this.
Okay.
First of all, Jennifer, thanks for your presentation. And it's hard to tell, this would be your first year doing this, because you seem very comfortable, so you're doing fine, okay. A few questions. I'm intrigued by, and you were moving pretty fast, so I'm trying to keep track of the slides here. On one of the slides, you mentioned there were some bullet points, and one of them said job creation or retention activities. And my recollection is, is in past years of looking at the CDBG projects, I didn't recall much emphasis or focus on that. Can you just, at a high level, talk a little bit about, you know, conceptually, how CDBG money might be used possibly for job creation or job retention?
No, I can't. Simply because it's very complicated, and the training that I've had on it so far is a HUD webinar that's eight years old. So I do know that from the books that I looked through on job creation, it's tied, the amount of money that you can spend is tied to the number of full-time jobs that's created. So I think that's one of the reasons why we've stayed away from it. We don't have a ton of money to begin with. And then when you start looking at some of the projects that we would be doing, they're not really creating enough full-time jobs to warrant taking away the money, because there's gotta be a trade-off from taking it away from some of the other activities. It's my understanding in all of my four months of wisdom, so don't hold me to it, but that's what I think.
Well, so philosophically, there's kind of a trade-off, right? I mean, you either, you know, you can provide subsidies, or you can provide the opportunities for people to kind of move up the economic ladder, right?
I think for the amount of money that we can provide, if I was an employer, I have to guarantee that the job is going to a low-mod person. And if they work for a week and then quit, I have to guarantee that that job is going to go to a low-mod person. And I think that there's a little bit, it's a little bit unattractive to a lot of employers, I think. But it's something that we can definitely look into for the future, once I get more familiar with it.
Okay. Next question is related to the construction charities. Now, I know that we're in basically year one of that right now. And I'm assuming because of the weather and such, we really haven't gotten into it that far. And so I think there's about 20,000 for, budgeted for this year.
50 for this year, for this coming year.
For the current year?
Oh, no, for this year that we're in right now, it was 75.
75,000, okay. So we've determined that we're gonna reduce that a little bit, and I was just kind of wondering, which, I'm wondering how we can, you know, how are we making those estimates or calculations?
For what we were, pretty much everybody had to take a cut across the board this year. And so we looked at what we could reasonably do with the amount of money if we, where we could cut it and still get bang for our buck.
Well, and precisely, so I'm trying to figure out, how are we able to evaluate what's happened so far in order to kind of estimate or calculate for next year?
Do we have time? I invited Ryan to attend in case there were questions. Ryan was construction charities, can he give you an update on where we are? Would that be okay?
That'd be great.
Okay.
And then finally, and I was interested in the two infrastructure and public facilities, and I understand the Jackson Street Sewer, the Catherine Street Sewer. You said, elaborate on that a little bit, with the accessible, what was the phrase you used? Fully accessible rental property? What?
It will be fully handicapped accessible throughout the whole house. It would have, I believe it's referred to as a universal design. And then, I actually talked with them today to confirm, and it will go to a low-mod family.
So these would be folks who actually have physical disabilities?
Yes.
And how many units would be there?
There's only gonna be one house with that project, though we're hooking everybody on the street up. So there's a total of seven homes that we would be helping. But there would only be one new fully accessible home.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Did we want Ryan to come up to clarify?
Thank you very much for meeting me today. I am Ryan Snyder, I'm vice president and founder of Construction Charities in North America, and I am absolutely pleased to be here, and would love to answer any questions you have.
I really don't have specific questions. I was trying to understand conceptually how, when we're barely started our pilot year, then how we're kind of going forward into next year to estimate how much money we're gonna spend. I was just trying to understand the rationale or the methodology for that.
Well, to this extent, we have actually begun quite well. We have moved along, considering we've had about three and a half months to date to get everything going and up and running. We have actually begun work. We have so far completed diagnostics on heating and air conditioning, electrical, and lead testing has been done on all the projects we have started with. There are seven to begin with this pilot year. And to that extent, they are somewhere in the realm of about $10,000 on average to the home. And I'd like to make a point that all of the homes that we are starting with are in the extremely low-income category. So while we are able to work through CDBG up to moderate income, we have specifically targeted, and at least in this initial program, the very, very low. These families, there are multiple of them, some single mothers with three and four children that make less than $20,000 a year. So, I mean, these people are definitely in real need, and our main goal is to be able to keep these people in the homes they're in now. But while they can afford to hold on them, they can't afford to repair them. So that's where we come in, and we get professionals to get in there and get these homes fixed for them. Absolutely welcome, any other questions, I can answer for you guys. Please.
Actually, not for Jennifer, but thank you.
Sorry about that. I'm sorry, if I might, real quick. This program, I would like to let you guys know that it has also allowed us to create our first Illinois Disaster Relief Fund. And this fund will affect people all over the state. And the only reason we were able to start any of this is because of the city of Bloomington. You guys were, had confidence in us when nobody else did, and we will not let you down in that respect. Thank you guys very much for your time. Oh, please.
Alderman, is there a question?
No, my question's for Jennifer.
For Jennifer, okay, so then, you were first, okay.
In terms, thank you, Jennifer, in terms of numbers, how do you define low income?
The, there's three categories. You have the extremely low, which is below 30% of the area median income.
Which is, which is, help me with that.
I wrote it down for with a family of four, give me just a second. For a family of four, I know it's, it just came out, it's 83,600 is the median. So 30% of that, oh, you know what, no, I take that back, I do have it with me. No, it's in the packets at the back of the room. I can bring you up one. But then we go to low income from there, which is 30 to 50%. And then moderate is 50 to 80% of that 83,600.
So moderate is 50 to 80% of $84,000, is that right?
Yes, roughly.
Okay.
I'll bring you up, it's in the packets.
And you have a percentage, you know, you wanna gear your efforts toward the low side of, you know, those in the 30%? I mean, how do you decide, how do you?
We, anything 80% or below, we can do lower moderates for our program.
And do you know where we, as a city, are in that percent? I mean, in terms of what percentage of these different groups we are actually helping?
I don't have it with me, I could get it.
Do you have those numbers?
Yes, we have to keep that on all of our activities.
I'd be very interested to see that. And the other thing I'd be interested in is when you define affordable housing. How do you define that, in terms of numbers?
It's 30% or less of their annual gross income going towards housing is considered affordable. So anything over 30% of their income would be above affordable. Thank you. Oh, thank you.
So it really kind of boils down to what's affordable for them? I mean, it's not like there's a certain number.
No, and I mean, I think someone said it best at one of our meetings was that, you know, she figured it up, and she's actually spending 45% of her income on housing, but she has no debt. So it's still affordable for her, but by head's definition, she's paying more for housing than she should be. So, but whenever you look at, for instance, for one person, $17,150 qualifies them under the extremely low category for us.
Is that income, 17,000?
That's income, annual income.
Okay.
Okay. And then it goes from 17,151 to 28,600 would be that low.
Okay.
And then 28,601 to 44,750 for one person. So somebody could make up to 44,750 and be eligible for our programs as a single person.
But that's, okay, but that's not 80% of 80,000?
Um.
80% of 80,000 is in the 65,000 range?
But that was for a family of four.
That's for a family of four, thank you, yes. This is for one person. So if you're looking at a family of four, 63,900 is the top for a family of four that they could make.
53,900?
63,900.
63,900, okay, that sounds, that sounds more. So they could actually make that and still be in the program?
Yes.
And?
And these are actually, they, we just got these for 2015, and they actually increased, oh, actually, these are the old ones, Ryan. Yes, I'm sorry. These are the old numbers. They're actually a little higher than that.
A little higher, a little higher now?
Yeah, sorry. I didn't pay attention to that.
So then when you look at what's affordable, say, for that family in the 64, 65, maybe now, $1,000 range, you would be looking at, like, maybe an annual housing cost of 20,000 would be?
Roughly, yeah.
Thirty, it would be 30%. Do you look at the gross numbers?
Yeah.
Or do you, you do?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get a handle on who these, who these people really are and what this housing really is.
Mhm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Alderman Black.
Thank you, thank you. What a wonderful presentation. A lot of people will call me often, if you pull up the one slide with all of the slides, the slide with all of the dots and the homes that are being targeted. I hear calls about this constantly. Tom will tell you that, I think I saw Tom back there, that I'm always getting calls about this, forwarding him on his way, so this is a very important program. I heard a lot of conversation in the probably last 24 hours. Can you point to the slide that shows where we're spending the money on public housing?
On public housing, oh, for the training for public housing?
My point is that there is no slide that has any money towards public housing. So there's some folks that seem to be concerned that we're going to be building these high-rise buildings for public housing. There's none of, there is zero dollars budgeted, is that correct?
Oh, no. I mean, we can't, with CDBG, we can't even do new construction. It's not allowed.
Certainly.
So, yeah, we can do rehab, but we can't do any new construction.
And there are no plans in the near future to do anything like that?
No.
Okay. Something to bear in mind, yeah.
That was a trick question.
Sorry. One thing I also wanted to ask, too, was, I remember about six months ago, we heard a lot of discussion about a mobile home rehab program. Is that?
That's the construction charities.
Okay, that's all through there, okay.
Yeah.
All right, good. I was curious as to where that went. And like I said, this is something that, you know, I hear a lot of phone calls from people who want us to demolish a house, you know, rehab it in some way, and there's only so much money to go around, and programs like this go a long way in alleviating that need. Obviously, it's not enough. There's always going to be that type of need out there, especially in some of these older homes and older neighborhoods. But this goes along with, I mean, your slide right here just shows it. I mean, you have a blighted property that turns into a fit with the neighborhood, looks good, it adds value to the homes, and we're doing good with this money, so.
And Carrie, our rehab specialist says that when he drives by, he'll go, if you go by this house six months from when it's new, the neighbors are starting to spruce up as well, because, let's face it, the bar's pretty low on, if you're living next door to the house on the left, you don't have to do much to look pretty good. But you get a brand-new home next to you, and all of a sudden, the bar is raised, and okay, I'm going to have to step up my game a little bit if I want to, you know, not look like the property off the left.
Absolutely. And, you know, I've been in neighborhood meetings where we talk about the broken window theory, which is, you know, if you let one window broken, and then it continues to spiral for the whole neighborhood, and, you know, things like this really go above and beyond. And, you know, I just caution the public, you know, when you hear kind of outrageous claims made that are just wildly inaccurate, do the homework and understand that there is no money for those types of things. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Alderman Lauer, last one out.
Just a comment. You probably didn't know that Sharon Walker and I actually worked in the private sector together in the housing industry many years ago, and I certainly respect our experience together and look forward to working with you. What I'm interested in is numbers, information, and I'm not asking for it now, but at some point, I'm interested in stimulating the private sector to meet those needs.
Okay.
And be able to privately fund the folks that we're actually talking about right now.
There are, what I've noticed in the few months that I've been here, there are a lot of people talking about affordable housing right now and how to fix the issue.
And I think that there, I'm sure that there's a way that the private sector can meet those needs and keep it off the government tab, and that's my goal. Thanks.
Okay.
Real quick.
Follow-up.
Sorry, sorry. Real quick, and I just really have to say something about that, what Alderman Lauer said, because those of us who live in historic neighborhoods know, you know, older neighborhoods where there's a huge variety of things, that when the private sector does it, you know, and they do, they absolutely do, it goes unrecognized, it goes, you know, completely, I mean, it flies completely under the radar, no matter how affordable it is. But a lot of private do, they do it, but they don't get, you know, they don't get recognized, but that's another issue. I think it was last year, and I didn't bring last year's CDBG funding in here, we had given some money to the halfway house for, you know, female.
Labyrinth?
I guess so. So is, are we still, is that in here somewhere?
No, no, that was, we, I think the rehab is finished on that, and I believe we had some money in there for, to help fund one of their staff positions, but they didn't request it for this year, and we had other places for to spend the money, so it's not in there for this year.
Do you know if that project went forward?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I didn't, okay, I, okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure. I just didn't see it in here, wasn't sure. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Now we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for input on the CDBG 2015-2016 Action Plan. And if you, if I could see a show of hands, who would like to come forward and speak to people? Okay, you have Rick come first, and then Alton, you have up to three minutes, and I would ask you to sign in.
I live at 810 West Jefferson, and I'm speaking tonight to support the use of community block, development block grant funds to help in developing properties on Bloomington's near west side. There are two at the corner of, that I'm aware of, the, on West Grove, at the corner of, West Grove and Lee Street, and there's another on Catherine Street near Market. The Catherine Street property is of particular interest in that it will follow guidelines making it completely accessible for adults with physical limitations. And that really addresses the point of lowering countertops, getting appliances that someone in a wheelchair could move up under to cook for themselves, so that sinks are lowered or built to accommodate those needs. It's more than widening the hallways and putting three-foot doors. It's a whole range of things. It's lowering switches for lights. It's raising outlets so that you can plug in an appliance for yourself. It really guarantees independence, and I think this can be, this is something that I, that I think Mark First and other not-for-profit agencies in the community have asked for. It's, there's this need, and it really requires new construction to kind of build this from the ground up. And so that's a real opportunity for us as a community. These CDBG funds are needed to provide the infrastructure upgrades for the sewer and water systems on Catherine, and it's going to impact, as we heard just a moment ago, Jennifer was saying, that the whole street will benefit from it. It's not just this one property. The locally Brent Shore Development owns and manages Angler's Manor Apartments in Bloomington, so they're someone who has been in the community for an extent, for several years. And I've been to that location. It's well-maintained, and that staff that manages those apartments, that site, will also be available to provide oversight for these properties as they develop them in the community. As an active board member and current vice president of the West Bloomington Revitalization Project, I see this proposal helps to support WBRP's goals in stabilizing and upgrading the neighborhood housing stock while increasing the property tax base. WBRP also works to increase the number of long-term residents in the neighborhood, which stabilizes the area for everyone. The Brent Shore plan takes abandoned and derelict properties, improves it, and assists people who might not be eligible for homeownership to live in the home and begin to plan towards buying it. Brent Shore Development is required to maintain ownership for 15 years before it can be sold. This provides time for the renter to build a credit rating to qualify for a mortgage.
I'm sorry, you're well over, you have to finish it.
Yes, I'm going to wrap this up, and I'm just saying that the board of WBRP does support this. We have discussed this in our meetings, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks, Rick. Mr. Alton Franklin.
No, actually, Mayor, Mr. Alton Franklin's in southwest Virginia. I'm just Alton Franklin, and I live at 508 Patterson Drive here in Bloomington. First of all, I want to commend you. It's extraordinary. I hope that the council was listening to what was being set up here. They reallocated funds. Imagine that. Where they needed more, they took away from someplace else. And everybody took a cut across the board. What an amazing concept. You take a certain finite fixed amount of money, and you do what you can with it. And what they do is extraordinary. I have seen the results of CDBG funds, and I know, I know that WBRP has a special place in Alderman Schmidt's heart. That stuff is just amazing to me, and they do it in a way that is, of all things, fiscally responsible. What a lesson to be learned, folks. I hope you were listening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And at this point, the public hearing portion is closed. Excuse me. We move to item 8B, and I will, actually, Alderwoman Schmidt?
Yes, I wanted to recuse myself from this vote as a member of the WBRP board.
Okay.
As I have in the past.
Okay, that's fine. And so is there a motion, before we begin the discussion, to approve the two resolutions under 8B, the Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan and 2015-2016 Action Plan?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Howman. Okay. Now, who'd like to speak to this? Anybody? Okay. If everyone will vote positive, obviously, this vote, I is in favor of the consolidated action plan, the two resolutions. The motion carries seven to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you. And now we move to our regular agenda. Oops, excuse me. Now we have one item on our regular agenda, item 9A. We have 15 minutes total budgeted. We start out with about a five-minute presentation with Mr. Alex McElroy, and we've got about 10 minutes for question and answer on this. It's the Intergovernmental Agreement to Authorize Cost Share for Coalition Participation in Local Siting Hearing. And I will ask that Mr. McElroy make his presentation before I ask for a motion here.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll be, I'll be very brief. This effort is three years in the making. Back in February of 2012, the City Council entered into agreement to join a coalition and pursue legal action to prevent approval of the chemical waste site, of which concentrations of PCBs would be allowed at the Clinton landfill, which sits over Mohammed Aquifer. What I have pulled up is a map of a recent posting from the U.S. EPA outlining what has been dedicated as a sole-source aquifer, a portion of the Mohammed Aquifer. And it's kind of poor lighting and poor coloring, but this outlined blue area is actually the boundary of what they have labeled as sole source. All of the yellow, which is filled in, is where the aquifer rests, spanning these counties. You can see Bloomington Normal area here in blue is currently sitting over the Sugar Creek Shed. What you have before you is a request to amend the original agreement to authorize cost sharing of legal and technical expertise to be present before the coalition, on the coalition's behalf, before a local sighting hearing, before the Duet County Board. What the IEP A did was they modified Clinton landfill's application to require them to have a local sighting hearing before the board. So what we're seeking is to help fund cost shares for legal and technical expertise to be present. This was unanimously, unanimously passed by the City of Champaign. It's currently being presented to all the other coalition members, and the City of Champaign is stating that they expect all the other members to pass the measure.
Okay. Questions of Mr. McElroy before, or a motion, either would be fine. Go ahead and state, Alex.
I will, too, before we talk about this, maybe just put a motion on the floor to support this.
Okay. Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Second by Alderman Black. Oh, that was Maboka. Oh, wow, Johnny was reaching, and, okay.
Why don't you say it again?
I can't even believe I'm on cough medicine, because I'm not even on anything. So, yes, second by Alderman Milowambe, with his enthusiasm. Now, questions, comments?
Just for everyone's benefit, Alex, would you talk a little bit about the financial skin in the game that we have with this?
Sure. What's being presented in front of council now is a not-to-exceed range. It was between 25,000 and 39,000. What council had originally approved back in 2012 was a range of between 3,000 and just over 11,000.
Other questions? Alderman Black?
Thank you, thank you, Alex. Very important topic. To be clear, my understanding was that this money was only going to go if there were further appeals or other applications. Is that the case? So conceivably, if there are no further appeals or applications, then we wouldn't need to put any skin in the game.
Where we stand today, there are two, there's two appeals outstanding. One is our coalition's appeal of the Illinois Pollution Controls Board, which we, as a coalition, filed a citizens complaint, which was then dismissed by the Illinois Pollution Controls Board. We've appealed that to the Fourth District Appellate Court, so we have that appeal pending. The IEP A also somewhat agreed with the coalition's stance in that a local sighting hearing should be required of the Clinton landfill. So they amended their original approval of Clinton landfill's agreement to require local sighting. Clinton landfill is appealing that modification to their permit. So those two permits are still pending, but the Clinton landfill doesn't need resolution of those two appeals to apply for a local sighting hearing. So this is being somewhat proactive, but it is anticipated that the next step will be an application for a local sighting.
Certainly, and it just baffles me why people would want to make money off of endangering our water supply. Certainly, and it just baffles me why people would want to make money off of endangering our water supply, it's confusing to me, so, thank you.
Just as a little bit of a backdrop, as long as you have this on here, if Normal does tap into the Mohammed Aquifer, about one million people get their water from the Mohammed Aquifer, and from the standpoint of Bloomington, our only real long-term water supply option is the Mohammed Aquifer. If you'll note, we, we can't drill anywhere in Bloomington and get to it, right? So, we have to play nicely with others on, on the western part of McLean County and negotiate a deal at some point, you know, as we move forward. As, as long as you have that on here, I just wanted to make that clear. The, the mayors of Decatur, Champaign, Urbana, Normal, and myself went about ten months ago to Springfield, talked to the key legislative leaders on both sides of the aisle, and then the governor at that time made our case, made it pretty clear. They did respond, uh, all, all parties, this is where all parties and all, uh, leaders were able to come together, at least on something, so, just FYI. And I will go to Alderman Milowamway.
Sure. So, I, uh, in reading some additional materials on this, I, um, and I was looking at the local sighting, uh, process, so, it, it sounds like the, um, we would have about a hundred and eighty days, right, to issue a decision as far as the application is concerned? About a hundred and eighty days?
It's outlined in the memo what the, the day span is if an application were issued, excuse me, by the Clinton landfill for a local sighting hearing. There, there's a set precedent window in which they actually have to hold that meeting.
Okay, and if nothing, again, from what I've read, if nothing happens within the hundred and eighty days, there's a possibility that this could be considered approved?
The, the, the reason for including that, the timeframe, was also to, to stress the importance of being more proactive in, in pursuing legal options. What we were stating was there's going to be a very specific window in time in which a local sighting hearing will be conducted, so to have fourteen coalition members which make up this consortium, we would like all them to act beforehand before an application is granted, because coordinating fourteen local governments to, to pass a measure through their corporate bodies can take some time.
Right, right, okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure that nothing would get missed, you know, if, uh, this were to happen. The other question I had was about the, um, the amount of money, I guess, that's required from us, and I'm looking at, uh, some of the numbers here seem to be based, they're based on population, right?
Yes, based on population.
Because Champaign, and, I mean, I, you know, Champaign has, um, I think is required less than we are, and I was just, I'm saying why?
They are acting as the lead agency.
Is that because they're taking the lead?
They, they are receiving some administrative revenue, um, from the participants, but they have dedicated a lot of staff time to, to coordinating this effort on the behalf of all coalition members.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Then, in, in discussions with their lead attorney, Joseph Hooker, he spends a, a very large amount of his time working on this case.
Yeah, I can certainly confirm that, Champaign's been the, the leader on this, probably followed by Coos from Normal. I mean, every time somebody had a hangnail, uh, within a minute, you know, we would find out, we'd get phone calls, texts, and whatever, when this was unfolding last summer and last spring, so.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? All right, um, a vote, a, I vote is in favor of the two resolutions. There we go. Uh, the motion carries eight to zero, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk, okay, thank you very much. And we move on to City Manager's discussion.
Mayor and Alderman, I just wanted to, uh, bring to your attention, they have put in front of you a copy of the two thousand and thirteen report that's entitled Bun Street at Lincoln Street, um, which talks about some of the changes that were made in the stop control assignments at the intersection of Bun Street and Lincoln Street. We are in the process of updating this report to show what has happened since the date of the report as far as accident history, uh, annual daily traffic flow, et cetera. We thought it would be, uh, very prudent to update that. As you are probably aware, there was a very unfortunate fatality, uh, vehicle and a motorcycle collided late last week. There has been charges brought, uh, drunken driving charges against the, uh, vehicle driver that ran into the motorcycle, but nevertheless, there is some, uh, ongoing concern. Many of the residents are asking again for the city to consider, uh, alternate forms of traffic control. We are in the process of kind of, uh, as we would with any fatality at an intersection, we do have standard protocol that our staff traffic advisory committee will, after all the data is provided by the police, in fact, there is still some accident reconstruction going on, but after all that data comes in, our, our staff committee will review that and come back with recommendations as to whether or not there is any further public safety improvements or, uh, action that could be taken. It is very unfortunate that, like in this case, when you have alcohol involved, it is, is very difficult to have any kind of traffic control device to, uh, to, uh, you know, avoid sometimes serious injury and fatalities, but we did want you to know that, uh, once again, we will be reviewing this, come back with recommendations. We have been discussing the matter, both with police, fire, as well as, uh, engineering, et cetera. So, uh, wanted to bring you up to date, and if you had any questions, I or staff would be happy to respond to that.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hales. And as, uh, Mayor, I, I don't want to spread my, whatever I've got, and I'm feeling crappy, so I'm, I have nothing to add that I can't add next time. Alderman saves.
I would just say that, um, this past Friday night, I had the opportunity, at the invitation of Alderman Schmidt, to attend the Taste of West Bloomington Gathering. That was the first time I, I had been there, I know Scott was there too, and you guys were, were kind of partnering with that. My wife and I had the best time, it was, it was an unbelievably great event, and, and so, my hat's off to, uh, to WBRP, because I know they were instrumental in that, and, uh, I know Rick had a chance to speak, um, there that evening later, but it was a fabulous event, so, uh, again, kudos to, uh, the West Bloomington Revitalization Project. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderwoman turns.
Just wanted to ask City Manager Hales, if everyone, have all of us submitted something about the refuse, some kind of proposal? And if we have, can we make all of that public? I mean, mine certainly can be, my proposal. I wondered if we could all see what everyone else is suggesting or thinking about the refuse situation?
Yeah, I'll have to go back and check and see if we've received, you know, feedback from everyone, um, but, uh, we'll go back and tabulate that. Assistant City Manager Steve Rasmussen is, is back from vacation, so he's helping take the lead and pu, putting that together. We'll be happy to share that with all the council, what we have heard. We're also, very shortly, will be emailing out just some, uh, some, uh, follow-up information just for, for your continued to review, uh, between now and April thirteenth, when you have indicated that you'll be taking, or at least, uh, considering again whether or not you're ready to take final action on the solid waste, uh, fund and its funding challenges, so.
Right, right, and I just want to, real quick, mention that a little history lesson showed that in the ninth of March, two thousand and ten, the Panograph told us that the garbage program will be moved out of the general fund, which handles most of the city's operating expenses into a separate enterprise fund as part of the budget proposal. So, when we voted for the budget that year, I believe we were voting for, if, if you want to put it that way, the, um, the refuse program to be moved into an enterprise fund. I don't know that we voted specifically, but it was part of the budget proposal in two thousand and ten, thank you.
Thank you very much, okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Alderwoman Schmidt, second by Alderwoman Howman, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.